More and more and 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 this last semester really was, I think, the hardest. And just because of everything going on in in life and. Yeah, it just but I just, I couldn't. I couldn't give up, so.
So what's next?
I'm doing it.
Graduate school?
No.
You're living it.
I, you know what, it it gave me, I have empathy for our teachers who continue their education. And do what they do and. You know, teach all day and they're they're continuing their education whether, you know, at night or I don't know how they, I I don't know how they're doing it, honestly. But I it the things that I've learned, like this degree specifically covers. It covered psychology, sociology, human development, behavior, families, marriage. Senior citizens, like you name it, the whole person. And uh and it's just made me, I feel like, I think, a better board member and, you know, a better, just. A more empathetic, understanding person to the work that we do up here. And um I just, I love this district so much and I I just think it's really helped me, so. People ask me, well, what are you gonna do with this degree? Well, I'm doing it. I'm going to use it for the next four years as a school board member.
You're welcome.
And in the beginning, I was really hesitant to talk about it. Cause I'm surrounded by everybody with these amazing degrees and. So I was really shy about talking about it, but as time went on, I became more and more confident and the very first person I told was Todd Johnson. And I just remember how he just lifted me up and was my first cheerleader in the district and then I started telling everybody else and. You have all been amazing, so thank you for your support.
Awesome.
And my family.
We'll get you to a new lane this year moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much, um. Uh, any community comment? Nothing. Okay, well, we'll move on from that then. Uh, consent items. Make a motion for consent items?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's move into action items. There you go, we got Zach, go ahead.
I wanna know what this tire equipment is. Didn't find anything in your notes when that alluded to.
So this is for the the mechanics at the bus garage. This will be a tire mounder, demounder, and a tire balancer. Mostly for our white fleet of vehicles, so. They, in the past, we've always had Point S or Big O do them. They've decided there's significant savings in doing them ourselves and getting tires on state contract pricing, so. They requested this equipment, so. Um, you can see the four bids there, we'll rightly bid two different brands. It's my recommendation that we accept the bid from Myers Tire Supply for thirteen thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second. Oh, second, sorry.
Aye.
Uh, any comment there before?
Thanks for the explanation.
Well, I was gonna say, my only question is, this is state pricing or?
These are not state pricing, so. There wasn't a state contract on these, that's why I I brought them to you.
This thing, Zach? Hey, uh.
Todd, what'd you do?
Well.
This is a good story.
I don't think you've told us the story in public, I may have missed it, but off for the record, what'd you do, Paul?
I I I really should make something up really exciting. But um, a week ago Friday, we were on Jordanell and I was excited for my first slalom ski of the year. And I was in the water and nothing really excited, excited, exciting happened. Other than I was just centering behind the boat and the boat started to fall and I felt a pop. And my bicep retracted up into my shoulder and I had to have it surgically reattached. So that's the story. So I'm a little disappointed because it's the beginning of summer and there are so many fun things to do.
Yeah. Well, you talk about what a pretty snow skier you are and, you know, that just maybe you should stick to the snow.
Once that first one goes, they can start popping all over.
Yeah, don't say it, I'm I'm planning a full comeback.
And he sat there and he stood there and taught Sunday School before the surgery, didn't even know.
Anyway.
Tough guy.
I'm here to ask for your consideration on some instructional materials and there's quite a list. It is the season of renewals and purchasing for um our for for our teachers, for their curriculum resources for next year. And so um, the first one that I would like to present to you is for our concurrent enrollment Spanish three and Spanish four classes. At Wasatch High School. So I'm actually really pleased with this purchase because it's um, the publisher is Vista. And this is um, the required text for UVU Concurrent Enrollment Spanish. But it also happens to fall in line with what we've done with all of our other Spanish classes, secondary Spanish classes in the district. We have Vista, Tamas, and Vista Cinderos and um, the students are doing really well with this publisher. And so my recommendation on this one is uh, to purchase seventy-five licenses from Vista Higher Learning. For a price of eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any comment there, guys? Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic, thank you. So, these are actually a little bit out of order, but I'm just going to stay in the order that you have. And so um, re- re- really, the requested approvals are for primarily elementary. English, math, and science materials with some testing materials in between. And so NWEA is testing material and just so you know what we're doing with that. Um, we, uh, it's a supplemental testing resource in addition to Akadience, but our K through second grade teachers. Are using it just to prove that students are learning on grade level. And so um, for NWEA, the purchase price for one year is fifteen thousand six hundred. And eighty dollars and my recommendation is to approve that. We've had um. It, well, NWA has been very informative for our team.
Okay, thank you. Well, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the the next one is that the the test is called the COGAT. And the test is used for third grade placement into our gifted and talented education program, GATE. And it actually triangulates with NWEA and Akadience reading. And so we we look at three assessment resources in order to make those decisions. But COGAT for one year costs eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And my recommendation is to approve that for one year.
Say that again, this is the software?
This is the test that students take to get into GATE.
And is that, do they do that every year or is that just they start at third grade and then move on with?
So, uh, just once, and so that's your qualifier.
How many kids usually try to test for it?
So um, I I believe we're offering GATE to ten percent of our students.
Don't they all test though?
They 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 all qualify for all the students test.
All the students test.
And ten percent qualify for GATE, so this is to test all of our second grade students going into third grade where gifted and talented starts.
Got it.
Gotcha. Is there a motion?
I move, yeah, okay, second.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks Todd.
Okay, the next request, um, and and um, we 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 purchased multiple resources from Savvas. But for this request, this is investigations. And so this is our elementary um, uh, math curriculum resource. And um, we we've done really well with it because we know that because our math scores are rising. But truthfully, it's not because of Savvas or because of any program or any software. It's because of the excellence of our teachers, but our teachers have been able to use this resource pretty effectively. And so. For Savvas, the combination of all elementary schools and the requests, their their requests. In ordering this res- resource comes to a total of sixty thousand, sixty-seven thousand two hundred, two hundred thirty-three. Dollars and forty-five cents. Um, my re- recommendation is is to renew it again. We've had um, we've had good luck with this.
Okay, where are we looking here? We're looking at?
You scroll down.
So the itemized elementary schools are Daniels Canyon, Heber Valley, JR Smith. Midway and Old Mill, and so then the, again, the total is sixty, sixty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-five cents.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any else, all in favor?
Aye.
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 She carries things, Todd.
Okay, so, um. I'll introduce ninety-five percent and Benchmark Advance together. But um, then the requested approval would come separately. But what we use this for is um, the, our elementary schools use Benchmark Advance. For their language arts instructional material. And it's supplemented by ninety-five percent. And so um, these two resources together constitute what the 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 state is also recommending. That covers support for all of the standards in English Language Arts for elementary school. So that's why we use those two resources in combination. And so in order of your materials, ninety-five percent group. Um, comes with a total of ten thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cents. And again, that's the supplemental resource to Benchmark Advance. So my my recommendation is um, to um, to approve ninety-five percent group.
So moved.
Second.
I have one question on that one. So the supplement is, is it just used for kids who are struggling with Benchmark or is every kid?
It's used for every student and sup- supplement means that Benchmark Advance um, leaves holes. In its support for the entire state curriculum.
Yeah.
But when you add ninety-five percent to that, then it supports the in- entire.
So it's not just a group of students, that's what I just wanted to clarify. Okay, thanks, Todd.
Kind of, it kind of speaks to what we were talking about earlier where.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no perfect curriculum out there. That's why we, it's up to our, our teaching and learning team. Our, our principals and our teachers to make sure that they're covering the standards and objectives for the class. In the old days, when I started teaching, the curriculum was the, was the math textbook that I had in my classroom, that was the curriculum. And and I was on chapter nine and my colleague across the hall was on chapter four. There was no discussion amongst math teachers as to what the other teacher was doing. Just, you shut your door, you did your own thing, so. In today's world, we're all driven by the standards and objectives. And then the kids take those end of level tests that are based on those standards and objectives. And we might be using two or three different curriculums to make sure that we're covering the standards and objectives that are set forth by the state. And it might take, here's kind of our baseline one, here's one we're using for this area, we might need something else for. And it's, and it's all based on, you know, the the first question of a, of a professional learning community is. What is it that we want our students to know? Once that's defined, then we go from there and and we use a myriad of things to accomplish that.
Well, you can have the best curriculum in the world, right, but if you don't have teachers collaborating and working together and figuring out what's best.
It's all about the wise decision making.
Of the teachers, yeah.
Knowing when to pull what, you know, we, we've, we've studied, we've had our. Traditionally in this district, we've studied a, a guy named Martin that taught us a lot about instruction and and we've kind of gone beyond that now, but. But I loved his metaphor that we've always used over the years and that's the, the tool belt, the teaching tool belt. And uh, he had a little booklet that for a while, it was kind of our bible as it related to instruction and it was called The Art and Science of Teaching. And the, the art part of it, well, let's, let's start with the science. The science part of it was that we needed to make sure. That we were using research proven, research-based instructional strategies. And then as we, as we train our teachers about those research-proven instructional strategies. They become tools in their tool belt. And they, and and we want them to have a whole myriad of tools in their tool belt. The art part of it is the wise teacher in the classroom deciding when to pull. Which tool out and use it. And right now, because of how my students are reacting, I'm gonna go to this tool. Or I'm gonna put it away and I'm gonna get this tool out. And. That, that's why we never, we're never bound and we've e- we we even had to push back on our own state office this past year. Because they were upset about a certain curriculum and we said, you know what, we don't, we don't base our teaching on some curriculum. We use the, we use the, the teaching, the curriculum and the instructional strategies. To provide it to the teacher, then the teacher decides when to use what and how to use it with which students. And it might be different, you know, the whole differentiated learning thing. It might be different for this group, might be different for this individual. And so that's what our high-functioning PLCs have sent us down this road of, of having these highly trained. Teachers throughout this district that understand this concept and know when to use which strategies. When to use which pieces of curriculum, when to cover whatever they think they need to cover on their own that day. To get us to the point where our kids not only know, this is a very important part of it, not only know what they need to know. Based on the standards and objectives, but can demonstrate it. Because if you can't demonstrate it, you go out into the world, if you can't demonstrate the things you know, you might as well not know it. And so this whole idea that, oh, my student's not a very good tester, we don't really buy that in this district. We say if your student's not a good tester, let's get them the help they need to become a good tester because we expect our students to demonstrate. To be able to demonstrate the knowledge that they've acquired um, in the classroom. And if you can't demonstrate it, then it it it's not near as beneficial to you as you go out into the world and you have to demonstrate it. Doesn't matter what you do, you have to sit down and show that you, you can do things.
Well, I still remember the day you did a presentation to the PTA Council Group. And explaining how, and this is how teaching used to be back then and it's not how we do it here. But kids on a conveyor belt and you open up their minds and you stuff the same information in each. One kid right after another, right?
That's it.
This is your presentation, so you can talk about it, but, but that stuck with me and that's, that's not what PLCs.
That was the presentation we used, that was our case that we made back in the day to become a PLC district. And the idea, and that was, that was, that's what drove Public Ed for a long, long time and a lot of other. Education institutions that we, we have this prescribed amount of knowledge for first graders. And it was up to the teacher and and that was the illustration that Kim is referring to. Pop the top off the little child's head and dump the first grade knowledge into their brain, then they go on down the conveyor belt clear till they get to the twelfth grade. And that's just not how we see it anymore and and sadly, that was a pretty, that was a pretty accurate illustration of. How school was when we were in school.
Yeah.
And it's not, you know, it's not about dumping knowledge on top of them and hoping they get it. It's, it's this whole interaction of, of making sure that, that they understand and that they can perform. And they can demonstrate what it is that they're learning. But we, we have the best teaching and learning team in the world, in the world. Let's just, let's just call it the world.
Well, our num- our numbers are showing it, so.
That's the world.
Yeah, so these are tools that are helping with that.
Yeah.
I don't think I got a second, did I get a second?
No, we got a second, that's why I asked the question, cause I love that it's doing exactly what Paul's saying. So I love that we're doing this together because it shows that, so, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, we all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, carries, thanks.
Thank you. So then the primary resource that ninety-five percent supplements is Benchmark Advance. And so my request is the approval of Benchmark Advance for elementary language arts. For ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Yeah.
It's expensive. This is, this is the main deal.
Who are the reps that are making a little bit off of this?
Savvas is a big company.
I have a second into your motion.
Okay, is there, is there a motion?
Second.
Again, okay, all in favor?
He motioned, I seconded.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you. So, um, now, now we're onto science. And um, this, this resource was experimental last year and and we had great results. And what Mystery Science does, um, it's uh, owned by Discovery Ed. But it aligns, it's, it's science resources directly aligned to um, Utah curriculum standards. So teachers can go standard by standard in the Utah Core and um, use Mystery Science as. Um, instructional material that supports what they're trying to do there. And our science scores had a significant increase this year. And so this not only is the individual student license, but in addition to that, it is also um. They, 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 they call them science packs, which um, and I'm, um, I, I, uh. Anyway, I, I, I feel like that this is the best part of Mystery Science because um, they're lab packs. And so they provide teachers with um, the experiment um, in a packet so that the students can do the science. And as a chemistry teacher, working with a supplier, I usually started a new lab. Um, by ordering a science pack from a vendor, v- vendor. Um, until I could learn the lab and then um, you know, replace it uh, with what I needed. But uh, the science packs really help in that process of getting students to do hands-on science in the classroom. And so Mystery Science will be presented to you school by school. Um, there, there, there were just very requests for li- for, for licensed and science packs. But um, the first is Daniels Canyon Elementary and uh. I don't know, Stacy, do we need to do these, do we, do we need to do each of these by license or can we total them? And then can you provide a total for me? So it's one, it's just one thousand four hundred and ninety-five times five plus um, Wasatch Learning Academy is another four ninety-five. If we wanna do it in one motion.
Keep going down, I thought you, you got it at the bottom, don't you?
There was a seventy-five.
Right.
WLA is actually four twenty-five, so each of the schools are one thousand four hundred and ninety-five times five. Plus four twenty-five for WLA and and that is li- licenses for the district.
That's just seventy-nine hundred dollars.
Seventy-nine hundred dollars, just for licenses and then we'll have to go through the science packs next.
Okay, so what are we doing?
Okay, so then the, um, okay, so then I.
I think you can do them all together, we're below our threshold at seventy-nine hundred dollars, so.
Okay, so I, 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 I recommend the approval of Mystery Science licenses for all elementary students in the district. For seventy-eight hundred dollars?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine hundred dollars.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Okay, let's get all in favor.
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay, we're almost there.
Keep going, buddy.
Okay, th- these are for science packs then, and so Daniels Canyon is requesting science packs for a total of six thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventeen cents. Um, I, again, I'm very supportive of Mystery Science and recommend that it's approved.
Keep reading, let's just read all the schools.
Read them all, okay? Um, Heber Valley for two thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, Midway Elementary for seven thousand five hundred and eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Old Mill Elementary for six thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. And I think that's all I have for science packs.
Twenty-two thousand four hundred and three dollars and twenty-one cents. For science packs.
So my recommendation is the approval of science packs for students in our elementary schools at those three elementaries for.
Twenty-two thousand four hundred and three dollars and twenty-one cents.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
I got, I got one thing to add about curriculum.
Go ahead.
No, you're fine, Todd, thank you for all your work today is, so to, two points. The first point is, when we look at the budget and Jason, you'll help me on this, cause I know you're getting ready to approve the budget for this upcoming year. There's a percentage that we usually look at. As it relates to the number or the percentage of dollars spent in classroom. And that's something that taxpayers look at and that's where other districts across the state and across the country, it's a benchmark. And so the last time I recall, our percentage of dollars spent in the overall budget that went to the classroom was. Over seventy-five percent, it's close, it's pushing between seventy-five and eighty percent. Now, that's where the money should be spent. So if we're gonna spend money and when I see curriculum or anything that relates to money in the classroom. I'm happy to, to know that we're putting that money where it needs to be.
Money well spent.
Money well spent. So, there was another report that came out last month that I sent out to the board that caught my attention. It was the US News World Report, K through twelve rankings per state. And they ranked math and reading through a test and Paul can give me some background on the NAEP test?
EEP, we call it the NAEP test.
Yep, and it, what was your comment about, it's pretty much the only way you can compare across the states?
It's the same test, so the only, the only way, that's why we have what we call common formative assessments or common assessments in our. Between schools, so third graders in Midway take the same test that, that third graders in Old Mill do so that we can compare. And uh, the NAEP test is given in, for whatever reason, Rocky Mountain Middle School has, has always been kind of a target from the NAEP people. So we have had participation in NAEP right here in our own district on, on a regular basis. And NAEP compares state to state. So when we, you know, we've studied some different districts around this, the country, one of them being Mooresville. Graded School District in North Carolina, um, that was a district about our size that was very high performing in their state. But the only, the only really true way to compare from state to state. As, as we studied Mooresville and they had done some incredible things, we, as we spent time out there with the group of principals and in their classrooms. We, we left there thinking, man, I, we, we feel like we're doing everything they're doing, plus, plus some. And, and so there could have been a little offset on, you know, one state's a little different performing than another. Maybe Utah's performing a lot higher than North Carolina, I don't know. But NAEP is the only measure, and now you guys in the s- the crowd are, are experts out there. If you know something I don't, you can feel free to correct me and speak up, but NAEP's the only test I know that's a true comparison. A common assessment between states and that's what US News and World Report uses, is the NAEP results. And when I was first in education and when we very first started hearing about NAEP ten or twelve, fifteen years ago, Utah did not score well at all. And uh, we were, what do you say, Eric, below, below half? We were, we were not good um, back, you know, a decade ago. Utah has come a long ways as a state.
Yeah.
Um, we have come a long ways as a district since then, and, and so the, uh, that's kind of what you want as a summary of that.
Yeah, and so they ranked the different states through the NAEP score in math and reading. And Utah ranked number three in the nation in reading and number two in the nation in math. And that's really impressive. So, if then you compare where we are in the state, we, we're number one in reading. So number one in the reading in the state where you are ranked number third in the nation, that's, that's a strong score nationally. And then with math, if you're number two in the nation and number three in the state, so the, the day we become number one in math, and then your state is number two, I think you can pretty much say that we have the strongest math scores in the nation.
Spike the football.
Especially with the reading. If you're number one in the state and number three in the nation, eh, there's, there's a pretty good chance that you can say, looking at those comparisons, that we're in the top three schools in the nation. That's what I would say.
Hey.
It's all moved.
So moved.
So we'll watch that national news report because Utah is continuing to improve. And the day they're number one in reading and we're number one in the state, I think we can make the claim.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, how else are you gonna make, how ca- how else are you gonna make the claim?
Let's tell Jerry Duke.
If you're the number one reader in the nation and you're the num- number one reader, I like it. Well, well, job well done, Wasatch.
Thank you very much. Hey, that moves us into board report. That's kind of a good segue into it.
That was my board report.
Nice board report. We did have a lot go on here in the last couple of weeks. Is there anyone that would like to kind of fill us in what they've been doing?
Everything?
Yeah. Give us a quick sum, hurry.
We've all been doing everything. Graduation, alt school graduation, alt school graduation was good.
Teacher awards.
Teacher awa- yeah.
Student awards.
Scholarship night. It was all great.
Pretty fun.
It's all, and the feedback.
Yeah.
R O T C. Yeah, J R O T C.
End of sports banquets.
State championships.
And we should, we should spike it, spike ball.
It's been a great year.
Always the best time of the year.
Thanks to everybody. Couldn't do it without you.
I want to talk about alt school for a second.
Okay.
I was impressed with, because we, you know, we got to be up there and
Yeah.
took a moment to ask questions, ask the students questions, like, what are you gonna do? And, and I was impressed that some of them are gonna go on to, like, they're, they already got certified in.
Yeah, M Tech.
M, yeah.
A lot of M Tech graduates, in addition to alt school.
Right.
Have jobs, already placed.
They're going on to U V U, they're.
Driving up the canyon four days a week for school because they worked.
Gosh.
Yeah.
There were like three students driving up the canyon from Utah County every day, attending, showing up.
Because they worked down there.
So, I was just impressed with the work that's going on. I'm impressed with the work that's going on at the alt school, and.
Yeah, do, do we know, M Tech, are they s- starting, what's the plan?
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth.
Airline breaking, and they'll, they'll finish, probably start, probably open up the same fall we do.
Yeah.
That sign is deceptive. I can't believe.
I know, we get asked every day.
He said to me, oh, is that the M Tech being built?
Let him think it.
Yeah. I haven't started the school yet.
I thought the signs are all, is there still one up?
There's one up.
Mm-hmm.
It's good, though.
School still might not pass.
It's good. When the M Tech building is built, it'll be a beautiful, and it has a lot of, a lot of glass and steel. It's a modern-looking building, and it will be on the front edge, so.
Anybody I've talked to, and I, you know, we've talked about the high school and M Tech being side by side, they're all just, they're excited. People out in the community, they're excited.
No, there's something to be said about it. And then you layer in a, a potential Utah State campus, that will be an educational Mecca.
That continues to move forward. We don't wanna spike the football, yeah. But that, that conversation is going well and continues to move forward, the Utah State extension.
Yeah, and that's gonna be a, that'll be great.
Well, Tom, once again, you gave a really good speech.
Oh, thanks.
For the students and.
I think it's a, well, I know it's a great way to approach a graduation speech from the board.
And that scholarship was very well fitting. The little girl had no idea that that was gonna happen, so that was, it was very fitting for what that girl went through in the year and the student that she is and will, will continue to be in the future, so.
Same for the alt, alt school.
Alt school, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's great. You know what?
I agree.
Cool thing. I think we've done a good thing there, and let's keep doing it every year. Makes a lot of sense as long as we can. Takes the focus off of us and puts it on, um, motivation, um, motivational story and, uh, student in need.
I had people comment about your speech and how it was to the point, you know, short, very well, very well spoken.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I, eh, as people have been giving me comments, I'm very quick to say I took it from yours last year.
But it's, it's hard in that environment and that, in that building. You can't hear yourself. It's, it's just a weird way to.
Yeah.
Present thoughts. You did a very good job.
A lot of people. But I, I do give you credit.
You put the Tom touch on it. It was good.
But you wrote the talk last year, and I just put a little bit of different on, spin on it, but not much, Kim.
Well, thank you. I think the only thing I have left here is superintendent report. Have you got anything else, Paul, you want to?
I think just, uh, as we, as we get to the end of the school year, um, one thing that, that we talk a lot about with our, with our leadership team is, uh, is, I think a good leader, um, is a gracious leader. And a good leader demonstrates a lot of gratitude at the appropriate time. And, uh, we have a lot of great leaders in this district. We have a district full of them, from, from principals to teachers to lunch ladies and bus drivers and, and you name it. This district is, is full of, uh, of great leaders. And we expect everyone in our district to be a leader. And, uh, as far as my own personal thoughts, as we, as we wrap up the school year, it's, it's one of gratitude. Gratitude for our kids. Gratitude for the wonderful students that we have stewardship over. Gratitude for, for our teachers as we got to go around and, and present some of the awards with the foundation to see the great work that's going on, teacher by teacher throughout this district. Computers and iPads are tools, and they're only effective tools if they're in the, under the direction in the hands of, of great teachers. And we have a district full of them. We have a district full of, of paraprofessionals and custodians and bus drivers and just all the people that support the activity of teaching. And we have a, just a phenomenal group of principals and the people that work in this building, the, the, the people that are in this room are, are the best of the best. And it gives me gives me pause, um, to be so grateful for Wasatch County School District and the greater Wasatch County area. I love this district. I love this community. I love the people that are in it. And, uh, it's a time to just reflect and, and be gracious and, and be happy for everything that we have. Catch our breath. And August first, you can bet that we'll be, uh, not that anybody's going home yet, there's still lots of work to be done over the summer. But August first marks the day when, when we, uh, we really get back to work uh, preparing for that first day of school and, and preparing for another great year. But for right now, let's take a deep breath and be, be grateful for what we have and, and who we get to work with, and we'll move forward from there. Thank you.
Well said, Paul. Thank you.
Anything else?
I just have a little, one, couple things from USBA, just really quick. Pre-delegate and delegate assemblies June seventh and eighth down at Canyon's. And so, I know it was in January, but I'll send you out an email, make sure one of us can go to that. Um, I won't be there, but one of us can, so that every district has a vote. And then interim legislative meetings have started, so I'm sure these guys all know that. It's good times, but hopefully we can start working and work together earlier in the process with our legislators. Be grateful, like Paul's saying, about what they do, but also work with them to hopefully make it not over four hundred new bills in four years. That's the hope.
Well, thank you for all your work there. That sure, you know, gives us a voice down there. I appreciate it, Marianne, what you do. Anything else? Corey, you got anything?
I do not.
Okay, well. entertain a motion to.
Oh, are we going in executive?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, let's do it.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.